It is 5:30 on 5/15. We call the graduating of the University of Mississippi Presidential Building for Education and Arts to continue in the light.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America, and to the republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Engel.
Present.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Here.
Mrs. Gillis.
Present.
Dr. Messer.
Present.
Mrs. Wackel.
Here.
I would take a motion to recommend a motion for the agenda recommendation as is presented including any adventures. A motion and second, is there any discussion or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackel.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi. We have some presentations this evening. Correct, yeah, we have two great presentations this evening. The first one we have our work select room results for you next this evening, and I'll turn it over to Joe Tellier and Davidson Yon.
Alright, well, thank you guys for, for allowing our orchestra to come. They are preparing, they've been practicing in pop and circumstance. Last year was their first time that they took it over. We started a new tradition. So for about seventeen, twenty minutes straight, they play pop and circumstance over and over and over. So, uh, they're very energetic and they have a lot of, a lot of Durville.
So we're excited to be performing in pop and circumstance for the graduating class this year. Like Mr. Tellier said, it's really a song about endurance doing it over and over and over again. But, you know, the best part about being a string player is we don't have to move, so we can just keep playing forever and ever, right? So we have our concert coming up this Thursday at seven o'clock, so we would like to invite everyone to come out. Uh, this Thursday, it's three dollars at the door. And we're going to be performing for you guys "Overture to Rintsey" by Richard Wagner. And this is just one of the pieces that we will be performing at the concert. Uh, who you see in front of us are ten students. These are our top students in the orchestra, just in the front rows. One of our students is not here today, uh, she had an work obligation. So normally I'd be conducting the group, but since she is not here, I will actually be playing in the group. Which is actually a really cool thing because you guys are going to get to see how the orchestra performs about a conductor, how much skill these students have, just being able to watch and listen to each other. So we're really excited for you guys.
Welcome you guys again and again. This is Thursday, and congratulations you guys, you're retirees. Uh, Jason, we have every student, you stand out and say your name and what grade level you're in for the group, if that's okay?
Yeah, certainly.
May.
I'm Rose Banana, I'm a student.
I'm Dane Janus, I'm a junior.
I'm Latulka, I'm a senior.
I'm Vet Ramirez, I'm also a junior.
I'm Haley Katzen, I'm a senior.
I'm Ada Barbara.
I'm Paige Kudaspe, I'm a junior.
I'm Eddie Elliott, I'm a junior.
I'm Elmer Carter.
Thank you all for coming, it's absolutely beautiful. And, um, one of the reasons we had them here for tonight was also for our retirees to enjoy a little bit. And we're going to recognize our retirees in a moment. And I think the work that look here decided to stay and when we do a little break and a little reception, they're going to play a little background, correct?
Possibly.
Just a little. Just a little, a little break with that cookies also. So, I appreciate it, thank you all for coming tonight. At this time, we're going to recognize some of our retirees who were here this evening. So first, can I have all my administrators, please, come up? So retirees, our administrators came just to show their support for you this evening and how much we appreciate their dedication and their service to this community, our students for many years. It's always sad to see some favorite staff members go. But we're also glad usually when there's a retirement at fault because there's usually some extra plans and some fun things for you in the future. So, um, let's, can we start by recognizing maybe one good at a time? Um, we have possibly some of those that aren't represented here. Not all retirees can make it this evening, but we are glad for those that make it. So, let's start with, let's start with Powers. If you're Powers retiree, so maybe kind of Powers, please stand up.
Would you mind saying a few words? Yeah, like, we've got a couple of, several different varieties of staff over here. We got people do a lot of different things at Powers, make Powers successful. We've got Peggy, who's one of our amazing monitors, who has taken care of kids for a lot of years, both at recess and also does double duty in the district, is also, uh, is a monitor on the buses and provides a lot of support for students. So we're very grateful for her, and it's been George, her other half. So we're excited for them and whatever adventures they have heading up next. So, uh, really grateful for all that she's done. Helen Mercado is over here to the left. Helen, um, she does a lot of different things in the building as an aide. She supports students, she helps us with dismissal, she does intervention blocks with us. So she helps kids who are struggling to read, to learn to read, and have a love of reading. Um, so she just does a little this and a little that all day long. We're grateful, I don't know how many years this is in?
Fifteen with Amherst.
Fifteen with Amherst, so a lot of years in the building doing it. Um, and then we also have Becky Brock, who, Becky is a teacher for, what's the number?
Uh, thirty-four.
Thirty-four years.
Three-six in STR.
She's less than forty-four, that's so it's hard. I just say, you know, Becky, I wouldn't be here without you, right? True, because technically she was on my interview committee, so. Amy gave her a hard time in the interview because it was during COVID and it was all virtual and her connection kept going out. And so she kept leaving and I kept coming back going, "What did I say? She left." So, um, but I'm grateful. All she does, she has a love of kids, she always puts kids first in all of her decision-making. Uh, she's got a huge heart for our kids who, and compassion for kids who are struggling. And she always reaches out for support, it's always collaborative. So, you'll be missed, but, um, our latest joke lately has been around her sister who also works in the building. And we've been joking that Becky is optimum voice for Lisa and her telling her to say no to things. So we're going to hire Becky to stand behind Lisa and tell her what she should say. She said yes, but that's really a no, and we're going to hire her. So we're excited for all of you and your adventures that you have in common. So thank you for all you've done for family. Thank you.
Also, uh, Jason, it's transportation, Cindy Worth.
Yeah, so Ms. Peggy, that's, you can call her Peggy, you can call her Ms. Peggy, that's pretty wild. So Ms. Peggy, uh, works as an aide for transportation on our PEP bus. And PEP is our, our alternative school. So those are a little bit more difficult students on that bus. But Ms. Peggy is, and I cannot stress this enough, she is like one of the kindest people that you will ever come across. She's kind, she's sweet, she's compassionate, and it takes that type of person to work with the students on the PEP bus. And I had to move her a couple of weeks ago to put her on another bus. And she actually requested to go back on the PEP bus because the kids like her and she loves them. And I just wanted for her to be with her kids before she retired. So Ms. Peggy, we love you, we know how I feel about you, and we miss you, and the kids will miss you. But I'm super excited for you and this new chapter in your life. And maybe, just maybe, you'll want to come back.
Uh, we don't have any retirees from Nord.
Mrs. Schultz is going to be here tonight. So she is our principal secretary who is retiring. She spent a lot of years at Steel before she came to Nord. And before that, she had bounced around actually to different buildings as monitors part-time and jumping around. So, um, her, uh, is actually turning ninety today. So she went to that birthday party. But she was all the way, she's a junior high.
Uh, AJH, please stand up.
We have, uh, we have Dr. Rhonda Newhoff, who's retiring, our assistant principal at AJH. And I don't know that there's been a family in this community that has not been touched with her kindness and grace over the course of her, how many years here? Thirty-one in Amherst?
Thirty-three years.
Thirty-three in Amherst, over the course of her thirty-three years. Uh, you talk about being student-first. Uh, Rhonda is at the heart of being student-first of what we do at the junior high. Uh, she is in the midst of a incredible game of war battle with one of our students who needs a little extra love and attention. And Rhonda did a nice, generously, to him and our other students. Um, she's always putting other people first in the building. She's someone that needs someone behind her to say no when she says yes. Maybe John could, uh, I wonder if he'll add. He might offer that, but, um, but again, just constantly putting other people first. I think when you think of Amherst schools, if Rhonda is not one of the first people you think of, you're in the minority. Because she has really created a presence in our community and in our schools and established that, uh, kind of like the ability to live both and do it really well. And I, and we will be less off without Rhonda at the junior high next year, and it's not going to be as good. So I'll apologize in advance, but, um, but it's Rhonda's fault. I didn't, I asked her to stay and she chose to retire. So, um, but Rhonda's a little wishy, we love you. Thank you for being my guiding light for my six years here and helping me navigate all of the things that we have at the junior high. And thank you for all you've done for the staff and the students of this school district. You're the best.
And we have Steel as well.
Maria. So Maria Tomusko has been an aide with us and she worked, she want to talk about heart of gold and putting kids first. Uh, she worked with our most at-risk and eddiest special ed students. And, um, she actually had, she's in a uni, she can kind of talk to you guys. It's official now that she actually retired in October. So she has already taken that trip of a lifetime. She talks about going to Italy with her family, um, her daughters. Uh, she has two daughters in North Carolina, one in Cincinnati, a son locally, six grandchildren. So she is looking forward to, after twenty years with us, I think oh, three? Um, after twenty years, she's looking to enjoy. She's here with her husband Dennis, um, to be around a lot of grandchildren and family. So, again, from the bottom of my heart and from Steel's, you will not find a kinder, gentler, or student-centered person in Oregon.
Congratulations. Uh, I didn't want to put any retiree on the spot, but I also know some of you might have some things you might want to share with us, we would as well. So, I was going to open the floor to you, is there anything you'd like to share? Say you don't have to, this is all about you, but if you'd like to, we'd love to hear.
I didn't have anything to share.
I didn't have anything. Well, thank you all, thank you all for, uh, and we have a special video that we're going to try to play for you.
We're going to coordinate it.
Yes, uh, the sound is having an issue. But we're going to try to coordinate playing, uh, the video through the TV and Sarah using her computer for sound. So it's got some.
That is, don't be.
Very quiet. Fun play, ready? Play.
Hi, Ms. T, we're here, we just wanted to wish you a happy retirement. We miss you and we hope all as well.
We miss you, I hope your retirement is going good.
I miss you, I hope your retirements go all well.
I'm missing Ms. T.
Hi, Ms. T, congratulations on retiring, we miss you.
Congratulations, Maria, on your retirement. I know you're already doing some traveling and looking forward to spending time down in North Carolina with the daughters and all the grandchildren. Thank you for everything you have done for Amherst High School and our students. Uh, you were already missed and well-deserved and couldn't wish you more enjoyment in your retirement.
Well, Ms. T, congratulations. I hope you enjoy your retirement and I hope, I hope, I hope you come visit sometimes.
Mrs. Schultz, thanks for everything you've done for Amherst and the school district. Thanks so much you've done for the high school. And especially thanks so much for everything you did for athletics here at the school. Uh, just know you're still on our list. We'll see you working tickets next year, even though you may think you're not going to. But appreciate everything you've done, enjoy retirement, and go Comets.
Congratulations, Mike. You are such an amazing teacher and friend. And I wish you all the very best. Thank you for everything you've done for me and my class. And I hope I still get to see you a lot next year when you substitute for my class. Again, just congratulations and best wishes. Have fun.
Happy retirement, Mr. Chris Tom.
Happy retirement, enjoy this new phase of life.
Hey, Retire, congratulations on your retirement. I hope you enjoy every minute of it, you deserve it. Best of luck to you.
Hi, Katie.
Hi, Katie.
This is all that's left of Team Polaris, our awesome year back in 2019, 2020.
So we're dropping one by one, you remember that great year? You know, although it was the year of the pandemic and things were a little crazy, it's one of the best years teaching I've had. And thank you for making it fun and laughing with us through all the craziness.
We really enjoyed working with you, we had a blast that year. We miss you, but happy retirement, we'll see you soon. Bye.
Congratulations, Katie. I'm so lucky that I was able to work with you in both Vermillion when I first started teaching and then again here in Amherst. I appreciate all you've done for me over the years. Um, you've given me continuous support and advice and ideas and I'll never forget that. I wish you nothing but the best, enjoy retirement with those grandkids, and enjoy time in the sunshine, at the marina, and hopefully we can stay in touch.
Congratulations, Katie. I can't believe that you have retired. We got to spend twenty-four great years together, starting at Nord and moving together here to Amherst Junior High. I was lucky enough to team with you and even luckier to work with you as a math teacher. I have learned so much from you, both in professional ways and in personal ways. I always value your opinion and I look forward to us spending time together outside of school. Hopefully I'll see you at the ice cream shop. Have a great retirement.
Hey, Beck, I just want to wish you the best retirement ever. You've been a hard worker, a loyal teacher. Um, the kids have loved you here. I'm sure going to miss you being in my building. Um, what can I say, how awesome to have your sister working in the same building as you. Um, it's been a fun ride, you deserve it, love you. Um, it's been a fun ride, you deserve it, love you.
Rhonda. Words cannot describe how incredibly happy we are for you as you embark in your retirement. You have been a staple of Amherst Exempt Village Schools and the Amherst community for many years now. And I can't tell you how thankful I am to have had you as a partner and as someone to help me navigate the waters through the last six years. Good luck in your retirement, stay well, and hopefully we'll still see you at the golf outing.
Remarkable Rhonda, persistent, extraordinary, handling chaos with a hint of flair, ordering discipline to your daily grind, nudging naughty students to leave mischief behind, determined to tame the wildest of crews, asserting authority without blowing up you.
Well, Mrs. Rhonda, I love you.
Happy retirement.
Apologize for the screaming glitches, but we'll post this on social media for everyone to see and you'll be able to watch it full, full sound and live on their devices in their own. So, um, at this time I would ask the board to take a nice break before I go back to my retirees and have some, and share some memories. We'll zoom after that for the rest of the working.
We will take a two-minute break, we will put a timeframe on it. Because the workers have been planning to make a break. Whenever they're ready, we're ready.
If you call the meeting back for another six, eight years for the regular, um, meeting, that would be right next on the agenda is item seven, which is hearing of the public. We do have Larry sign up to speak to us, Larry, if you please stand up to your name and address. And you have, uh, five minutes to address the board, we will not have any conversation with you unless you have your concerns.
Okay. Okay. Oh, shoot, actually I was gonna say I just had you have questions.
Okay, well, we, depending on what they are, we may answer them, but we don't have to answer those questions.
Sure.
We'll get you the answer just from that perspective because we don't know what you're being talking about.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, this is a lot less intimidating when there's a van and all the sirens. But, uh, yeah, so I'm Larry Binsec, and I live at 225 South Lake Street. Um, actually I grew up next to the tennis courts here in Amherst.
Okay.
So I'm very familiar with to, uh, life at the schools. But, uh, when OAN came back in, uh, 12 years ago, um, to a house just off the school property. And, um, you know, after, I don't know when exactly, I don't know if it was after COVID, but maybe when all the schools came together, just the activity levels changed a lot. And I and my neighbors started to experience sort of, um, the daily trespassing of, it could be people from the school, people not from the school, but there's just so much activity now. I wanted to address it. And I did email, actually I talked to Rhonda Newhop was the first person I met and talked to Chuck by email. And I guess Mike Molnar maybe got my presentation I put together. Um, and they were very good to consider it and give opinions. Uh, thanks for that, guys, but I, as I mentioned to Chuck, I think, you know, for the next 20 years, until there's some reason not to come in people's yards, people will. Uh, and so I feel the need to, um, uh, pursue, you know, some sort of action, whether it's, you know, now or it's a time of the future, I don't know who to petition. I don't know what the mechanisms are here, so I just was here to ask, like, I think, you know, we've talked through email and I've got your opinions, but just generally speaking, I think, like, one of the opinions I had was that, or one of the opinions expressed is I don't think the school wants me to deal with this because the first step would be putting up, you know, private property, do not enter. And those are menacing signs, they're not fun to look at, people will ignore them. My next step would be to call the police, um, it's not something I want to do for 20 years. It just seems a lot easier for it to at some point be part of the budget to build barriers. Cause I think, I don't know how many kids are in the school system, it looks like thousands to me, I mean, it's at least hundreds. But they're out there from 8:00 morning until 8:00 PM. And there will be people in my yard, my neighbor's yards for the rest of time unless we do something. Now, it's a detail, um, Chuck has allowed, has agreed to allow us to stop cutting the grass between my yard and the fields, and that will do something. But generally speaking, I've talked to a couple of the neighbors, um, and there, there are others with concerns. I just know what the channels are, so that, that was the question, I, I don't know if you guys can advise me, and we've talked a little, I don't know if you consider it a finished issue, but if I'm there for, you know, 20 or 30 years, it will always be an issue, so I just wanted to know who to talk to.
You talk to that gentleman right there.
Okay.
Mike Molnar. Okay. You address all your concerns to him about that, he will make sure they get to the appropriate person. And if it needs to come to us, it will come to us, but sometimes it can be resolved without coming to the board with something like that.
Okay.
Okay? But your contact from this point forward would be Mr. Molnar.
Okay.
Okay?
I was gonna say, so Larry, let's set up a person-to-person meeting versus, you know, email, we can sit, Chuck, we can, we can sit down and meet in the board office and go over something.
Yeah, okay. That's it. Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we'll be moving on to item number eight.
I have a very brief, uh, report this evening. Um, I produced the, um, April five-year forecast, um, report, I did not give it to you. We're doing a five-year forecast here in the next two weeks. Um, we are, um, we are spending like 1.76 million more at this point during the year than we did last year at this time. Um, last year our cash balance was 26.1 million at this time, right now it's 24.6. Um, I, as I look at the comparison between month-to-date activity this April versus last April, there are, um, a few inconsistencies or I wouldn't say inconsistencies, but variances. For instance, in property tax allocation, last March we received it, this April we received it. So there's a $940,000 variance there, um, to the good, obviously. Um, and then, as I said, um, we are running about 1.76 million ahead in expenditures this year over last year. And those expenditures are everywhere. There's, um, more than $800,000 in compensation, first line of expenditures. Um, there's a $440,000 increase in benefits, there's an increase in purchase services. Supplies was a material change, it's almost $400,000 more than last year at this time. So we will go into depth with that far more detailed in the five-year forecast presentation. Can I move on to recommendations?
Thank you.
This month, uh, printed standard items for, um, for the board's approval. We have the regular board meeting minutes from April 24. We have both March financials and April financials, same things you always see. Things on the cash rep, the forecast report, and a check detail for, um, your cash table. And then, um, item D, you'll see increases in appropriations, uh, the general fund. Uh, at this time of the year, the general fund has a virtual little rule. We need some additional appropriation to finalize some things for the year. The, uh, there's a new school safety grant in the amount of $19,753.67. Was that an attorney general grant, like? That was an attorney general grant, right? And then, um, the Ohio K-12 safety grant that the board approved last month in the amount of 162,000 is actually 163,421, so I asked for the difference in appropriations. And then the auxiliary funding, that is funding for St. Joseph's that goes through the district. Um, I asked for a 7361 dollar increase in appropriation for that to finish out the year. Item E is the annual, um, requirement where we transfer one half mill to, uh, from the PI fund to the, um, maintenance fund, O-34 fund. That fund can only be used on our new buildings that were funded, um, in part through the Ohio Civil Construction Commission. So though that money accumulating in the O-34 maintenance fund can only be used on AJH and Howlers, um, just to, um, redefine that for you all. And then item F is a motion, that's it.
Entertained a motion to take recommendations from Treasurers 9A through F. To the second, motion in the second on the table, is there discussion or comments on those recommendations? Hearing none, it's callable.
Mrs. Gellis.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackel. Mr. Engel, what did you say? Okay, I, I just had to ask because I wasn't sure what I heard, thank you. Uh, and Mr. Engel.
Hi.
Thank you.
Is this your agenda three quarters?
I don't have a report this evening because I want to focus on retirees and the workshop which gives a phenomenal job for nine, nine students, plus Mr. Young. Uh, planning that piece for what, six minutes or so, it was just phenomenal. So, so check out their, uh, concert this Thursday. Also want to let you know that Channel 3 did, uh, did, did a story and came to Nord on Friday. I did do a story on the students who came to the board meeting last month or so for the eclipse. And so they're doing a little story and that story should be out on Channel 3 on Thursday at 4 o'clock PM. Want to write that down, look for our fun, uh, Eclipse Day story on, uh, Thursday. And, uh, just a reminder, we have a special board meeting scheduled for Wednesday, May 24th, 7:30 AM at the board office, so that's also on the agenda. And then just real quick, uh, our softball team is playing right now and just check Twitter. Uh, they're playing in Lakewood in the playoff game and they're on 8-2. So in the fifth inning, so it looks like they will hopefully win and move on to, might be the district monster. Yeah, might be the district monster, we'll see. So congratulations, they're doing a good job. That's all I have for my report.
Assistant Supreme Bennett, who is the one?
That is me. Um, lots of exciting things have been going on, we had special weekend on Friday. Uh, since we last met, we had our summer activity fair, I mean, it's just, there's been a lot of fabulous things going on. Um, I did, don't have a formal report together because we had the orchestra and retirees, but I did want to ask, there were some questions that had come up about a few of the contracts, um, under educational recommendations. And under item 13A, there's a contract for TLC transportation. And that is not a transport from Amherst out to Toledo, that is for a student who resides up in Toledo. Um, and so he requires specialized transportation. Um, for 13B, Translight Ombudsman, we have had a contract with them for several years. They run a program out in Avon for, uh, some of our students who are on, um, students with special needs who are in need of individualized programming. They are now opening an additional site in Illyria for grades K through 3 for our more intensive needs students on the autism spectrum. And so that's what we're, we've got a student in mind that we have purchased a seat for within that program. And then the final, uh, question that had come, um, across my desk was for item 13C with Insight Consulting. That is a school out in Westlake that we, that again provides individualized behavior and academic programming for students. Um, the extended school year is strictly for students with special needs. And so this, um, we have several students out there at the Insight Academy and that contract is specifically for three of them that are receiving summer services. So hopefully that answers, um, some of those questions. That's it.
Any questions, Chris there?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, so the Toledo thing, so they're, uh, Amherst resident, but they're in Toledo for school, is that?
I really can't get into details in an open meeting, but he, he does reside in Toledo and it's from his residence to the program.
Any other questions, Chris there? Um, my report from the JBS would be that the recognition for JBS seniors is Thursday at 8:30, I believe, in the rain, um, so that's happening. We were all there last month, nothing really exchanged from that perspective. We're interviewing my quarterback, I mean, the seniors will be done after seeing the JBS after Thursday, uh, from that perspective, so. And then graduation will start really involving the whole school. But for those of you who haven't attended that event, that event has become shorter over the years because we've done a lot of that, we don't give every scholarship, we don't do everything as we used to do and be there for five hours. We used to recognize every student that was graduating and they would get their portfolio and we would award every scholarship the JBS has done. But I did send along, I do believe, one scholarship spring, did I not?
Yes.
Um, so that program has been, is done, has already been, so it will just be the recognition of this, of the students from the 13th school districts. Any questions? Okay. Is there any other committee reports besides?
I've just been briefed with mine, everybody has a packet, so just some big points. The State House passed their version of the, um, budget. And the Fair School Funding Plan will be phased in, uh, years three and four, I believe, start in July will be phased in. And then a major point for transportation, so they're trying to figure out, um, you know, teacher shortage, not teachers, sorry, uh, bus drivers shortages, things like that. Where, and also in districts where you have your community charge schools, but, um, similar schedule schedules and the home school is still rivaling for transporting the students. So, um, they're looking into implementing a pilot plan through ESCs and I don't know how they select them, I think they can, uh, different ESCs can apply. But, um, or districts, excuse me, can apply, but, um, they're looking to have transportation through the ESC for some of those community charge students. So that's kind of a big line helps with, um, those districts that have to tackle that. Let's see, I'll see the vouchers. And just some upcoming training and they tell people, again, continue to, um, discuss things with your local legislators, stay engaged, and, um, continue the conversations from the budget. And just some apps, so if everybody had a little.
And we noticed that the, your elected officials, the public education is on its, it's done for you, so. So I want to each can try to get a hold of them. I guess they're free.
I have a report that I do want to say for student achievement, I did email all the major principals who saying that it's time if they want to have, or if they just sent this out to all their faculty and staff to say, uh, for capital conference, the, everything's ready, if they want to nominate like a student each February to like actually present at the student achievement fair. So I'm hoping that somebody will go, because there's so many good things, and there were so many good things to see at the student achievement fair last year, that was, I remember my favorite part. And so I'm hoping that Amherst will present at the campus student achievement fair that's coming here. Even if it is one side or something, because I know it's gonna be a hassle to like get students there, but I think it's still Amherst, if there's anybody who's interested.
I think the Wednesday deadline for possible having a group presented be a part of the capital conference itself, um, we're gonna try and see if we can, we require, and we'll be able to try.
I'm thinking yes, yeah. I know they only choose like four out of the whole state to present, like an actual, you know, a showing. Yeah, on the main stage, so it would be a long shot, but that would be great.
Well, try it.
One of these years, yes, maybe not this, next.
Is there any other committee reports that I, anyone have, if you want to say, or discuss from that perspective? Is there any board other, board discussion or updates from the board or anything else? If you, if you can figure out in the group. Uh, I would just have one, one thing, and this would be with the treasurer. Now that you're fully staffed, because I know you've talked to us about staffing off and on, how is that going, is everyone getting trained, everyone trained? Is there anything more that we need to be concerned about or that we should be? Or that we should be doing to assist in making sure everyone is getting the training that they need or the help that they need or whatever they may need?
Great questions. Um, does the board need to be concerned? No. Um, are we fully staffed? Yes. Are we fully trained? No. Um, one will be fully trained. I am anticipating that it will take, Mike and I were just talking about this and David, uh, Mr. Odelli, for me, um, earlier today, that they can take upwards a year for Sarah Trivio, the newest payroll benefit person, to be fully trained to see an entire year of different things in the payroll sector, correct? Um, meanwhile Suzanne, who is our standard staple for payroll, she will be learning benefits along with Sarah Trivio. I'm guessing that that would probably take through, again, to see everything right now on an open enrollment, so that's a good thing that they're all seeing this together, the open enrollment cycle in May. Um, that benefits would likely be fully trained by the end of the fall, so end of the calendar year. As soon as Sarah and Suzanne can take all of the benefits off of Katie, who is supposed to be my bookkeeping support, Katie will be able to more fully spend on learning that role. So it's going to be phased in, but I really feel like by the end of the calendar year, we're going to be in a much better position. Um, I would say that Sarah, our, our newest hire in the Treasurers office, is picking things up very, very quickly. She takes copious notes, she remembers things, you can set her on little projects by herself, she's been doing some auditing. Um, Suzanne, Sarah and I all together, we're working on the health insurance rates for next year. And that's, it's very involved, mind you, the contract language dictates, you know, if you're less than a full F T E, um, and you work a like point seven five F T E, that you mean contract language dictates how much the employees share would be, and it gets pretty, it gets pretty confusing. So we've gone through that entire spreadsheet, um, recalculated everything, um, made it, um, more foolproof in the sense that I've created like absolute cell addresses in the formulas, so only a few key cells need to be changed every year through the long project. And they check my work and I check their work, et cetera. So we're doing, we're doing, I think, very, very well. Um, I don't think that you'll see us having the financial over for more than, you know, April close, you see it May, May closes, you see it June, et cetera. I don't think that I'll be asking you to weigh up to improve financials, um, but it is really, there's a lot in Treasurers office that has a very lengthy learning curve. Payroll is a very, um, complex cycle and, um, there's a lot of calculation in it, there's a lot of monitoring of time block, which is the timekeeping pieces we use for classified employees, and so, um, a very lengthy answer to your question, Mr. Engel, we are, we are on a good path.
I just wanted to make sure that we've got everybody's training they need or what they need to do in the name, in addition to what you're doing.
Glad you asked.
Does, does anybody need, I'm asking a question, does anybody need munis training at all? Does anybody need to go to another district or send them to Alaska or Hawaii to get training?
It's in the Bahamas.
Alaska.
Um, munis. We utilize munis more fully than any of the other districts around us. We are the standard, our, our A site tells us that we implemented it better than any of the other districts that use it. And there's only a handful that use munis around here, most everybody else uses the state software redesigned for a product called E minus plus. So we are really in audit, we're in uniform.
So why do we use munis?
Because it was implemented.
It was required.
But I know that, I know.
Previous treasure.
He said, he said, and the, the prospect of full conversion, the prospect of a full conversion to a different software is, it's too great a task to, I'm like, go and redesign or E minus plus.
Okay.
And munis is a really good piece of software.
Okay.
It's complex, but it is a really good enterprise resource, planning software. And we, we mentioned time block and, um, we were again talking this morning about putting Sarah and Suzanne on a project to use time block, the timekeeping piece of software that we use more fully so that it is more, the data from there for payroll period is more easily uploaded into munis in the format in which it needs to be in. So we, we have plans, but I would anticipate staying on munis.
Okay.
And it's, it's a, it's a good piece of software and a conversion takes a year or more.
Okay.
And, and this is not a new requirement, treasurer, that a really fabulous staff, staff is very engaged in the process, so. Yes. Do they need additional training? Yes, and we go to training, um, a few times a year, depends on what it's about, but it's usually for calendar year end, for payroll, for W twos and ten ninety nines and things like that, fiscal year end is huge, um, so June is the month that we spend the entire month cleaning things up for the year and preparing for the next year, creating budgets and appropriations and things like that. Um, and we do definitely go to training for those two things, but there are also a lot of different roundtables and stuff, and one thing that's great since COVID is that the ability to attend trainings remotely, we, we do a lot of that, I mean, we do it all over the district, so. Um, so yeah, we will continue that, and when there are useful and viable trainings, um, not even related to our A site, we send, we send staff there as well.
Any other discussion or board comments? If not, we would move to item twelve on the personnel recommendations. Before Mr. Mulmore gives us those recommendations, I would like to ask for a motion to table the withdrawal, not the withdrawal, to table the item under A of the resignation of Fritz. I'd like to pull that and table that person till a, a different time. So I would need a motion to do that, so do I have a first and a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mrs. Gellis.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackel.
Hi.
Rex Engel.
Hi.
Very good, thank you.
Now, Mr. Mulmore, you can make all your recommendations, we don't have to take anything off.
Okay, yeah, so with that change in twelve A, uh, the rest of the items of the board has a chance to see, and they are traditional items this time, resignations, retirements, additions, and hires for next year. I'm also pleased that, uh, Mr. Grimmett, you, uh, you were able to fill all the maintenance.
Two of the three.
Two of the three? Okay, so two of the three, so that's good, we could be.
But we've bought some time now, we have a little, because the students are going home in about twelve days, so. We have, we want to pick the right people, and I think the two were the right folks and hopefully we'll find, I'm looking, but my signs worked.
Yes.
Did you folks see my signs?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It was amazing, no one was, was applying at all. Every now and then we'd get the same folks that applied for everything, then I put my signs out while I'm kind of, it was getting two or three a day. So I, and then Rachel helped me a little bit with, uh, the website, we put a little radio button right on the website, so I had to just click on that, it would take you in, you don't have to navigate, all those things I think helped us, so, so it's working, so I was pleased.
So we're going to look into transportation bus drivers, always looking for new bus drivers. That's right, we've got a new maker space, that's an option to talk about. Uh, so again, the rest of the recommendations, you have a chance to look at all personnel, get hiring for the presentations and get some help for, for the summer for both maintenance and for technology. So with that, I'd like to recommend with your change, Mr. Engel, uh, personnel items twelve A through twelve, oh.
Entertained a motion? There's no P. I don't have a P, do you have a P?
Just I don't.
Your motion, do I have a, do I have a second? Well, somebody motioned, you motioned?
Yes.
I was listening to her a month recently, but I'm sure that the recording secretary knows who made the motion.
You lost.
Well, I don't do that for a lot of reasons. Is there a discussion on those motions? Hearing none, call the roll.
Mr. Zappa. Mrs. Wackel.
Hi.
Mrs. Gellis.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi.
See, with, on the, on this one, on the.
But you don't have the opposite side.
Not a problem, but I think you're just looking at the wrong version.
You know, maybe we were, uh, it's not on.
Well, I tried to update it, I'm just saying, I tried to update it and this is what it gave me, I hope so.
Okay, let's move on while she's trying to figure that out.
Yes.
Do educational recommendations thirteen.
All right. So there are four items there and Sarah talked about three of those items, so, um, let me make just recognition for educational items thirteen A through thirteen D.
I, so move, I, but I'm telling you, I'm here, it's different.
Look, look at the paper.
Look, I, I will come and look at yours in a minute.
We're in the next one, it's all the ones.
Okay. We have a motion in the second for thirteen A through.
I agree.
Thank you.
You want us to use our high tech, right?
Is there any discussion on the relationship of education? Thank goodness, there's no public.
It's, it's just the stream.
I mean. Maybe we can add that in. We do have that.
That would be cheating and we're not going to do that.
Okay. Call the roll.
Mrs. Gellis.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackel. Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa. Mr. Engel.
Hi. Business recommendations, item fourteen.
I have three items, uh, I believe the breakfast and lunch prices are staying the same for next year. And we, I want to let you know that we don't have on here our school fees, handbooks, and supply list for each building, but we're going to do that on the May twenty four special meeting so that we'll have those ready for them, principals want a little more time just to refine the handbook and so on, so we'll do it then, we're still going to sweep it out to the public with no problem. And then item C under fourteen, um, as we talked about last month, working with O F C C for moving forward with the facilities planning process, um, Bill Prentice, help from O F C C, sent us, again, just documentation and application for the, um, for the next segment which we talked about moving forward, and so he gave us a new resolution that we attached to the board agenda today to then get approved by the board, and just take the next step in working with O F C C in a future project, which, um, that's all it does, just, it's a resolution to help, to help us join the program. And we have not decided anything but a future project or amounts or levies or anything, it's just to get us moving down the path of, hopefully like we discussed last month, having them come in, do the assessments, do enrollment, projection update, and then hopefully by the end of summer have, uh, definite numbers and things from O F C C to consider for the board and the facility advisory. Okay? Yes.
So on the paper where it says, you know, to be completed, like we have third book we've got already, third one complete, these are just like, in theory, that's not.
Correct, we're not bound to do any of those things on.
And if we change it, that's fine.
And O C C filled that out and sent it to us to do, so if you'd want to, well, let me make sure it's in the forums.
Do you know the number?
Wait, we have to have a motion, so we're going to do this.
Oh, I'm, I'm sure.
Okay, I know. Are you done explaining?
Yes.
Okay, now we entertain a motion for the business recommendation.
Second.
Okay, now you can talk on it.
Do we, do we know the number we're at now, the room last time you were talking about, we have to be in a certain number and why or something like that?
This, this will tell us.
Yeah, yes, yes, I asked that question and he, he said this resolution application, so I think, I think once we send this in to him, that's when he'll be able to give us some more information about where we're at in the rankings as far as are we closer to being going to move forward to segment two within two years, so.
I hate to be fair or bad news, but that's not great online either. I mean, I had, I don't have a, I don't, I can just let you know, I don't want to see.
I'm going to come over and update yours.
Okay.
Because it was all put in the survey.
Okay.
Yeah, it sounds like the draft hasn't been updated.
Sounds like, yeah.
I don't know, call the roll. Totally, totally our call.
I was giving, are you looking at the draft? Because the draft has a P on it, because there's the draft agenda is right at the top of the list and then at the bottom,
I, I tried to update, it wouldn't let me.
At the bottom, what Janet uploaded at two twenty eight, it says regular board media agenda is guaranteed.
Well, Teresa, just to make you feel better, I never had the draft. This morning when I emailed you, because I meant to make sure I didn't have a bunch of questions, because I looked at, I thought I had looked at it over the weekend and I didn't. Obviously, because I didn't, I wasn't there unless it was a bank, but I did not have the draft at all, so that's why I spent all afternoon, so this is, okay?
Okay.
After I got the notification, it appeared it was there, but when I was hunting it, I mean, I searched history, I searched everywhere because I didn't know where it was, like, I don't know what.
Sounds wrong, but.
Okay.
Which graph?
Which graph?
The fact that we didn't do all of this here in the week, because it was really bad, but I know that there's, it was in there inside that.
All right, is there any other? I don't, I just want to make sure that, because last year we had some concerns about revenue from lunches, we had some issues in lunch work. And seeing that, whenever that one's, okay, just seeing that we did not increase food prices, lunch prices, knowing that we don't get everything that we got from the government, and knowing that the cost of food is increasing, have we done a thorough check with food service and accounting to make sure that these numbers are good?
They have been extremely healthy.
Equally positive.
Positive balance.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because we had always had that kind of fun, fun, not fun, but fun, that was always positive, but I know we had concerns a year or so, or six months, a year and a half ago, and now.
It was a lot.
So I just wanted to make sure, since there was no increase in this, that we weren't going to come back mid-year next year and say, oh my, we should have charged another fifteen cents.
Do you know if the paid lunch equity calculation was made?
Talking about.
Okay.
And the add-on that they're entertaining, you know, whoever's eligible from due size, they'll be, so they're expanding the free lunch.
As long as the increased funding comes from their USDA reimbursement side, that would not hurt us and it'd benefit us, you know? And they're willing to.
We're not getting any funding from them.
And they're willing to.
But they're used to it. All right, I thought it was my only concern, and I just wanted to make sure that you may look at that, that nutrition services had looked at that, and you kind of blessed that this was going to be okay from a monetary standpoint.
Well, we can ask the question, and, and there is a, there is a required calculation for paid lunch equity that has to do with local, local price and the amount of federal funding that we receive, and that's typically why a district raises the lunch prices by a minimum amount each year is to keep pace with that.
Right, I just wanted.
But we could, we can check that out, the paid lunch equity.
We could send a board of current funding balance and looks.
There's something like some reimbursement.
Oh, and you can just tell us that when we meet on the twenty fourth, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that we, we get, if we approve this and then come back and have to change it for any question. So I just wanted to make sure that we're good with that, so that was my only thought when I looked at that. Is there any other comments or questions?
I just want to throw that, on the reduced lunches proportionally or percentage wise, whatever we look at. On the, the reduced lunches percentage wise, what do we see? Is that stable on the increase or where are we at with that?
As far as our percent population?
Yeah.
Um, it varies by building, we have, uh, younger children or parents with younger families are more likely to fill out those applications because of school, et cetera, whereas some of the high school students don't always fill out applications. Whereas some of the high school students don't always fill out applications. So each one has its percentage, but overall, we're, we're probably close to twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent, twenty-nine percent. Or maybe five years ago, we were twenty-three, twenty-two percent. So it's increased.
Any other questions? No one's planning on voting no on the OFCC, are they? Because if they are, we have to take that separate motion, did you have to put that in? Correct? But I just wanted to make sure because I'd have to remove that. So, okay, I just thought of that because I remember seeing that. First I thought it was a signature, so I went back and looked at your vote, we're voting to do it.
Just, I just want to reiterate, this does not tie us into anything. This does not commit us to a program. It does not commit us to a building project. It simply puts us in line for the enrollment study and for the, the rev up facilities assessment. What they did, what about eight, seven, eight years ago, they're going to put new numbers to it, right? So that's all this blocks us in that, it puts us in an acute or potential fund.
But again, I just want to make sure that no one had intended to voting nay on that because if they did, we have to take that as a separate motion to take it from out of this consent because it has to be recorded as such. But since you've all said you're going to vote for it and we can't just take it and go and vote nay on everything else, that's fine too, you know, we need to vote on this. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Wackels?
Aye.
Mrs. Gills?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.
I think. We're ready for checking.
Yes.
So I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of negotiation discussion. So.
Second.
Motion is second for executive session. There will be no action to follow that session. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Mr. Zappa?
Aye.
Mrs. Gills?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels?
Aye.
Mr. Engel?
Aye.